Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order now. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, for roll call, we'll just note that we have all of our board members present tonight except for Mr. Leach, who I believe is out of town this week. For executive sessions, I'd like to announce that we held an executive session tonight at 7:20 before the board meeting to discuss personnel. And we will be holding another short executive session after the board meeting tonight to discuss personnel as well. I do not have any forms for public comment at this time, but before we move forward, do we have any requests for public comment? Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Shirk.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Lower. At this time, I would like to turn the program over to Mrs. Williams, and I know she has a cast to help us out tonight to share some good things here happening at Lower. Mrs. Williams?
Okay, good evening to our parents, community, our school board. Our special guests are distributing your folders for you for this evening's presentation. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, Mrs. Schaefer and I met with you at District Office to discuss the gifted program. So what we'd like to do today is kind of give you an update on how things are going with the program and also give the children an opportunity to share what they have been involved with over the past couple of years. So I would like to commend Mrs. Schaefer for all of her hard work. She works really hard with the kids. She has introduced them to several new programs. She's always open to new professional development. About, I would say about a month ago, I sent her information about STEM training, and she was like, "Yes, I want to go." So immediately, she signed up for it and got involved, so I really commend her for it. And she's going to kind of speak to some of that, that she learned from that training as well. But right now, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Schaefer because our students are ready. You're going to enjoy this.
Thank you so much. These are just a sampling of some of the gifted students at Lower Potts Grove. And I'm not going to talk too much because I don't want to steal their spotlight because they were pretty excited to be able to share some of the things that we're up to in the gifted room and out in the world. I do have some things that they're not going to speak about, like reading and math and writing that we do on a daily basis, and they'll touch on that. But they do a lot more fun than me with reading groups and extra math groups, and we have a new writing group that we just started. We have someone in the community who's a writer and editor, and they're actually coming in and working with some of our students on creative writing. So we're really trying to get the community involved as well into what we're doing. But like I said, they are the ones who are going to share some of the more interesting and fun, exciting things that we're doing. So I'm going to start by letting you see. So like I said, just some of the reading that we do, some extra guided reading groups for the more advanced students, the author's crew that just began, and math. But more exciting are some of the competitions that we do. So to start us off, Ava is going to share with you some things about Word Masters.
Hi, my name is Ava, and I'm in fifth grade, and I'm part of this year's Word Masters Challenge Team. Our team is made up of 11 fourth and fifth graders. Word Masters is a vocabulary competition based on completing analogies. The way it works is we get a list of 25 words that we need to learn. We practice the words and try to find relationships between them. Then our competition is solving 25 analogies based on those words. This happens three times throughout the year. We thought we'd give you a taste of what would like to be part of the Word Masters Challenge Team. In your folders, there's a pink paper with a list of words and their definitions. On the back, there are four analogies. Take a minute or two and see if you can solve them. For everyone in the audience, you have a little bit harder. The four analogies are on the screen, but you don't have the definitions. Number one, baby is to lullaby as hero is to fanfare. Raise your hand if you got it correct. Number two, yes is to no as encourage is to restrain. Raise your hand if you got it correct. Restrain. Number six, banker cow is to large as food supply is to copious. Raise your hand if you got it correct. Number seven, fetters is to restrained as attire is to clad. Raise your hand if you got it correct. Thank you. Now Grayson will tell you about Math Olympads.
Hi, my name is Grayson. I'm in fifth grade, and this is my second year in Math Olympads. Math Olympads is a worldwide competition. Last year, schools in all 50 states, 13 American territories, and 23 foreign countries participated. There were over 120,000 students on over 5,000 teams. Last year, three of our members scored in the top 10% of the world. More than half our teams scored in the top 50%. The purpose of Math Olympads is to become better problem solvers. Team members develop the ability to reason, be logical and resourceful, and also deal with not knowing the answer. In your folder is a green paper. It has a few examples of problems from past Math Olympiad challenges. Take a minute or two and see if you can solve them. No calculators allowed. In problem 1A, there are two sets of parentheses, so you have to remember that you do what's inside of them first. 10 plus 9 plus 8 plus 7 plus 6 equals 40. 5 plus 4 plus 3 plus 2 plus 1 equals 15. So 40 minus 15 equals 25. We do not have time to go over the other two problems, but for anyone who wants to know, the answer to 1C is 5,320. So A is 5, B is 3, C is 2, and D is 0. The answer to 1E is 22, even though you can't really see it. There. Thank you. Here are the fourth graders. Stampede.
Okay, guys, remember. Guys, we Huddle, remember?
Hi, my name is Natalie.
My name is Lizzie.
I'm Lucy.
I'm Fodger.
I'm Joey.
And we are part of the Odyssey of the Mind team.
This is our second year doing it.
You probably don't know what Odyssey of the Mind is, but we're here to tell you.
Odyssey of the Mind is a creative problem-solving program. Teams of up to seven students need to select a problem, create a solution, and then present their solution to a panel of judges in a competition against teams from other schools. We really have to use our creativity because there are lots of different ways to solve the problem. Both this year and last year, we chose the performance problem to solve. In this problem, the scoring is based mostly on the performance and elements within the performance. It sometimes requires a specific character, sometimes humor, sometimes an original story, but it's always fun.
Last year, our problem was called "To Be Continued: A Superhero Cliffhanger." The idea was that creativity is being taken away from the world, and it was up to us to rescue it. We had to create and present a performance about an unexpected superhero that encounters three different situations where it must save creativity in some way. The superhero had to change appearance when she displayed her superpowers and go back to blending into society when not. We also had to include a clumsy sidekick, a nemesis character, a choreographed battle, and a cliffhanger ending. While we didn't do so well in scoring, we had a lot of fun and learned a lot. We had to learn how to work together and listen to everyone's ideas and suggestions. We had to create everything from scratch, from the costumes and scenery to the props and script.
One of the hardest things about Odyssey of the Mind is that we are not allowed to have any help. That means no outside assistance. That means no one besides the team members is allowed to help us in any way. We have to find your own stuff to make all the props and scenery and create the story and perform it. By completing all the tasks ourselves, we feel a lot of pride in our work and surprise ourselves with what we are able to do without any help.
At the competition, we also have to solve a spontaneous problem. It's called spontaneous because we do not know what we'll have to do until we enter the competition room. Solving problems like this teaches us to think on our feet. There are three types of spontaneous problems, and we do not know which one we'll get. It could be a verbal problem, which requires verbal answers. It could be a hands-on problem. For that kind, we have to physically create some type of tangible solution. Or there could be a verbal hands-on problem. That kind of problem is a combination of the other two. Here's an example of a spontaneous problem. We have two yardsticks, and we have to answer this question. What could this be? The more creative our response, the more points we can get. So we could say there's skis or oars for a rowboat. Here's another example. They could give us a bunch of supplies like rubber bands, tinfoil, paper plates, and toothpicks. Our job would be to build the tallest structure that could hold a golf ball at the top.
We've been working for about a month so far on this year's problem. The competition will be at the beginning of March. This year, our problem is called "A Stellar Hangout." The problem is that there is an intergalactic hangout where all sorts of creatures from different worlds stop, eat, refuel, and relax. We have to create a humorous performance centered on the science fiction hangout that includes original creatures, food, and a search for space treasure. There also has to be human work of character, entertainment, and a futuristic map that goes from 2D to 3D. We still have lots and lots of work to do, but we have some great ideas and know what we need to do. We learned a lot from last year about what works and what doesn't, so we are trying to do even better this year.
Wish us luck this year!
Hi, my name is Avery, and I am in third grade. One of the activities we do during our gifted time is an art challenge. We get in groups of two to four and have to work on, and have to work together to create a piece of art. Mrs. Schaefer will give us a piece of paper with the beginning of a shape on it, like an apple. Our challenge is to create a piece of art around this, but we can't draw an apple. We have to use the entire time, so we can't have, we can't, we have to plan ahead and use our time wisely. We have, we can't finish too early or late. Everyone in the group must actively participate the whole time, so you can't have one person do all the work. Doing projects like this teaches us about time management and how to work and collaborate with others. It also lets us use our imagination and creativity. Thank you. Now here's Tyler with the news.
My name is Tyler. I'm in the fifth, I am in fifth grade, and I am the editor for the Falcon News Crew. The Falcon News is our school's morning news program that classrooms watch each day. The Falcon News is a privilege just for fifth grade. The gifted students are the crew, but all the fifth grade students are given a chance to be actors and reporters. In the news crew, we have a director, writers, camera people, and editors. It is our job to create the news, film it, direct the actors, and edit our news. Our writers need to be creative in order to come up with what our actors are going to say. The director needs to be a leader and has to be able to give directions to the actors. The camera people need to know how to use the camera equipment and get the best shots. The editors need to use technology to find pictures for the background and put everything together in iMovie to create the final product. You can check our daily news on vemo.com/pgstd. Oh wait, now here's Josh.
Hi, my name is Joshua, and I'm in third grade. Another thing that we use during our gifted time is Osmo. Osmo works with an iPad. You put the iPad in the Osmo base and then put the reflector on the top. The reflector has a mirror that goes over the camera. The reflector lets the iPad see whatever is on the table, so you use pieces for the game, and Osmo sees it and sends it to the iPad. There are lots of different games you can play. Coding and Coding Jam are two games that teach you how to code. In coding, you have to help your rabbit move around the field to eat strawberries. In Coding Jam, you can program your own music by arranging coding blocks into patterns. Masterpiece lets you draw whatever you want without ever looking at your paper. It takes an image and translates it into easy follow lines. In Newton, you use physics to figure out how to bounce a ball to hit a target. You can use any object or drawing to guide the falling balls into the target zones. Words teaches you spelling, vocabulary, and problem solving. It shows you a picture, and you need to figure out the missing word and spell it correctly. You can play by yourself or compete against a friend. Your teacher can also upload words to be used, like spelling lists or vocabulary words. Numbers is a math game where you can practice basic math facts. In Tanagrams, you arrange wooden puzzle pieces to match on-screen shapes. The puzzles get more difficult as you get better. Using Osmo is a fun way to help kids learn. The programs are all structured like a game, so you don't even realize you're learning. Thank you. Here's Lila.
My name is Lila, and I'm in third grade. Rube Goldberg was an American cartoonist, engineer, and inventor. He used to draw cartoons of complicated inventions that performed simple tasks. Now, lots of people try to create their own machines, and we've been doing that in our gifted classes. A Rube Goldberg machine is a series of chain reactions by starting with rolling a ball and knocking something down. Other things happen. One thing leads to the next, and eventually something simple happens at the end. When we are working on our machines, we always have to think with the end in and memorand and remember the purpose of our machine. Then we have to link different things together to try to make the purpose happen. Thank you. Now here's Joseph.
My name is Joseph, and I'm in fifth grade. As gifted students, it is our job to think of the future. We want to solve problems and invent new ways of doing things. One of the ways we can learn how to do this is by participating in some of the things you've heard us talk about tonight. Another way is to figure out how to use technology to get ahead. We are going to have someone come in, someone from the community come in and teach us how to use Internet of Things. Internet of Things is a coding mechanism where you can make simple tasks happen automatically without moving a muscle. You might have something like this at your house or already may seen something, seen things advertised on TV, like when you turn on your light, the blinds go down, or when you open the door, the lights come on. Miss Schaefer is working to get us more supplies so we can create some of these things at school. She created a project in Donors' Choose, and we only need $100 left to get the Little Bits. Little Bits is a set of electronic building blocks. They are magnetic, so you can attach them together easily to create all sorts of inventions. The model of Little Bits is make something that does something, which I think is appropriate. In gifted, we are constantly trying to find ways to use technology. We use Osmo to practice new skills. We use programs like PowerPoint, Kahoot, and Sway to present information. We are going to have someone come in and talk about drones. We are constantly looking for ways to get ahead and thinking about how we can impact the future. Thank you for having us tonight. We were glad to be here and talk about the gifted program.
Excellent job, excellent. Thank you for your time and your support.
Mrs. Schaefer, I just want to tell you that I was there when you were, when you were presenting these programs to us at the Curriculum Committee just a couple of years ago, barely, and I'm really pleased to see how it's turned out. It's a nice job.
Okay, so before we move on from our recognition and awards and presentation section, I just wanted to insert something into our agenda tonight because it's a pretty important meeting for us as a board and, I guess, for two people in particular, Diane Cherico and Rick Rabenowitz, who tonight are sitting in on their final board meeting. So I wanted to take some time to recognize their long, hard work and all the effort. I know this is the couple hours every two weeks that most people see, but being a member of the school board is a lot more than a few hours, the few hours a month that we're, that we're here in these meetings. We have the Parks and, or the Potts Grove Recreation Committee, the Education Foundation, our various board committees, MCIU representation, the Western representation on the JOC at the Western Center, and many, many other things, committee meetings, workshops, and the like. There's a lot that goes into it, and these folks work very hard for our district and our community. And I just wanted to recognize tonight, there are many years of hard work and dedication, and thank them for that, and also ask if they'd like to take a moment to address everyone at their last board meeting tonight. So with that, again, I say thank you to the both of you. It's been a great pleasure and honor to work with you both. I've learned a lot from both of you in my time here, and I'll always appreciate the time that we've spent. So Diane, if you...
Just real quick, because we don't want to make this meeting any longer than it's already going to be. But when I decided at the beginning of this year that I wasn't going to run for reelection, I counted the number of meetings that I had left, and I think I came up with 30 or more when you consider all the board meetings twice a month, and then the curriculum meetings, and the MCIU meetings, and all the rest. And I thought, oh, that's going to take forever, and now here we are, finally, this last meeting. I can't believe that I'm all finished. And I'll, from the bottom of my heart, I will miss these presentations that we have from these kids, because this is the heart and soul of what we do here, and all the time and effort that we put in is to see the enthusiasm that they have and the progress and all the great things that they do. But my journey here on the board started five and a half years ago because at that point, I wasn't quite ready to stop being involved with the district. Both of my daughters had graduated, but I had been a part of Potts Grove since 1995, when my older daughter started at Lower Potts Grove Elementary in kindergarten at the building on Pleasantview Road, which we all know is no longer part of our campus. But from 1995 till now, I've been volunteering and spending hours in every single building, whether my girls were in classes there or PTO events, fundraising, concerts, sporting events, everything under the sun. My husband and I did not graduate from Potts Grove, but we are the proud parents of two Potts Grove graduates from the class of 2008 and the class of 2012. And I feel that our girls have shown just how invaluable their Potts Grove education was and is. My older daughter is now a licensed physical therapist, and my younger daughter is completing her first semester at the University of Pennsylvania School of Veterinary Medicine, so she's on her way to being a veterinarian. But I feel that with the strong foundation that they receive from Potts Grove, they're able to follow their ambitions, and they're becoming successful young women. And in my opinion, Potts Grove is a truly wonderful district, and we have great teachers, we have great support staff, and we have a great administration. And I've been very, very honored to spend the past several years helping to make sure the education that we provide to our students that is the best possible and all trying to remain within a reasonable budget. So I'm grateful for my experience. I'm happy to hand over the reins to our newly elected members, and I hope that you will always consider the ramifications of your decisions that you make on the board and how it's going to affect each and every student that we have here. And I also just want to give a shout out to my husband, Anthony, who's probably been my most staunch supporter over all these years, and just remind him that now, on every second and fourth Tuesday morning, he doesn't have to say to me, "Well, see you tomorrow, honey." So thank you.
I surprisingly actually have less to say. Tonight's my last board meeting, and I, you know, wanted to just say a couple of final things. It's been an honor to serve the Potts Grove community and school district. When I decided to run for the school board in March of 2012, I was motivated to do so by a laundry list of issues with the school district that I believed were either unresolved or going in the wrong direction. As I consider the current issues before the district, some of which are the same, I see 180-degree change in approach and attitude. I see an administration that doesn't hide from the hard truths we face, but rather does its best to meet our challenges head on. We have all the pieces necessary to be a school district of choice. Exceptional educators and administrators, involved parents, motivated students, a dedicated school board, and a community that is supportive of our mission. While I will miss being on the school board, I'm confident that the good work that was started when Matt Kelly and I were elected four years ago will not skip a beat with my departure. I want to especially thank Matt Alexander for being a constant friend and confidant. Thanks to John Rossi for his encouragement and support. Jim Lappick, Ashley Custer, and Al Leach for their friendship and all that they have done over the past two years. Bob Lindgren for his decision to come back to this board when he was needed last year. Dr. Shirk for his wit and common sense, especially during the time that he was assistant superintendent. And finally, I want to thank my family for their solid inspiration and support over the last four years. I will close with a Thanksgiving quote from John F. Kennedy. "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them." Thank you. Thank you.
So thank you again to both of you. And I know we'll be having another moment of recognition at our next meeting, December 5th, but I wanted to give you both the opportunity and for us to have the opportunity to say thanks.
Yeah, but I won't bore you a second time.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to Section 5, Approval of the Minutes. The recommendation is to approve the monthly board actions for October 10th meeting.
We have a motion and a second to approve the board minutes from the October 10th meeting. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, move to combine them.
Yeah, can we do that? We'll just- and I second that. So 5.1 and 5.2, which includes the meeting minutes from the October 24th meeting. Any questions or comments on either? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hey, thanks.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Second. So we have a motion and a second for receiving of accounts for audit. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in amount of $6,186,480.27 for October 2017 as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for October 2017 as presented and file it for audit.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the report of the superintendent, we'd like to turn it over to our student board reps.
I'm Mason, as you know. So I was actually going to apologize because our report is not very long tonight, but then I saw the agenda, so you're welcome. So I'm going to start at Lower Pots Grove. The Rainforest Assembly was a PTA- or, yeah, the Rainforest Assembly was a PTA-sponsored assembly that was both entertaining and educational about the rainforest. During the show, the students learned about the wonders of the rainforest and were able to see live animals and artifacts from the rainforest around the world. Also, the presenter shared interesting facts about the animal's survival, natural history, geography, natural behaviors, and conservation. They also had Mix-Up Day. Lower Pots Grove celebrated Mix-Up Day at lunch on Friday, November 3rd. The student leadership team helped students get mixed up and also participate in activities to help start conversations. During the week leading up to the event, the students enjoyed participating in school spirit days. These days displayed ways to show kindness, empathy, and compassion towards others. And the schedule for that was Monday, October 30th was Silly Sock Day, Tuesday, October 31st, High Dye or Favorite Color Day, Wednesday, November 1st was Crazy Hair Day, Thursday, November 2nd was Inside Out Day, and Friday, November 3rd was Mismatch Day. Now at Ringing Rocks. Ringing Rocks is having their Family Fun Night on Friday, so come on out. And soon approaching is the elementary 4th and 5th grade chorus concerts, which will be on November 30th, which goes for all the elementary schools, not just Ringing Rocks. And then at West Pots Grove, there will be a Bingo Night on Friday at 6:30, so come on out because who doesn't like bingo? And from the elementary schools to the high school, everyone is excited for a whole week off. I know I am.
For the middle school, we have the orchestra and chorus concerts coming up next month on December 11th and 14th. And on the 15th of December, there's a Family Fun Night with DJ, dancing, basketball, indoor Gaga, volleyball, a quiet area. So come on out and have fun, 7 to 9 at the middle school. For the high school, Western Center Girls Night Out event will be held tomorrow, November 15th, with- starting with a welcome at 6:00. This is a great opportunity to have some fun on a Wednesday night with family and friends and also learn more about career opportunities in fields like carpentry, HVAC, collision repair, sports medicine, and more. The boys' football team got a nice win for Penny Packers last game on Friday night. The score was 38 to 8 or something like that. I don't remember exactly what it was. But the boys keep bragging how they are the first team to win two district champions in a row, so going to hear about that for a while, I think. And they're playing on Friday at Springfield Ford for First Round of States against Bethlehem Catholic at 7:00, so nice to come out for that. And the marching band earned a score of 92.3, which was the highest score since 2008 on Saturday night to win states for them. And there was supposed to be high school musical- high school movie night on Friday, but that was canceled, so- because wasn't enough interest, I don't think, with the football game going on and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items and number 10. We're going to start with an audit presentation and Mr. Nestor, have you introduce our guest.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Tonight, we have with us Chris Turtell, partner with Herbine &amp; Company, our local auditors. We've been working with them for a number of years and have developed quite a relationship. Without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Chris. It is on. Good evening, everyone. In front of you, you'll have three different reports. The one I'm going to concentrate on is the landscape report. Goes in this direction, actually looks like that. So Dave, everybody, it's Christopher Tom, a partner with Herbine &amp; Company. Just a little history, Herbine &amp; Company are a regional firm based out of Rockland, Pennsylvania, about 150 people in our firm, and we audit over 30 government organizations and school districts, community colleges, intermediate units in Berks, Chester, Montgomery, and the Exeter Counties. So tonight, we'll talk briefly about the Pots Grove School District Audit. I'll flip over first page, talk the interview overview, and we'll flip over actually to the introduction section. Just briefly, introduction is to remind you that we audit under three different audit standards. We have our normal government auditing sta- normal audit standards, government auditing standards, another layer, and then we also audit the federal programs here at Pots Grove School District. And our charge, so to speak, is to offer an opinion on the financial statements themselves and also the major federal program that we test this year. Flipping over to the next page, you'll see our audit opinion. And we have an unmodified opinion on both the financial statements and also on the federal program itself. So it's the cleanest opinion we can give, unmodified is a clean audit opinion. Very minimal adjustments. Actually, any adjustments we made were given to us for bills that trailed in after we started the audit. So what that means to you is when you're approving your treasurer's reports, you always say, "Subject to audit." We had no adjustments to those numbers that you received, so a real testament to you and your staff here. On the federal program side, we did audit the National School Lunch Program this year. Even though you do outsource your cafeteria, all the applications for free and reduced lunch are still determined in-house. So we test the validity of the determination, geoverification process, and we had no findings with any of those compliance areas this year. Flipping over to the next page, just changes in fund balance for the general fund. You'll see one year of history, 16, a column for 17 in the middle, and your budget column off to the right-hand side. On this page, the third number from the bottom in the middle, you'll see that Pots Grove had a $1,173,000 surplus for the current year. From a revenue standpoint, a couple of items to note under the local sources, transfer tax was a very favorable balance this year. Turns out, there was one large property that made that favorable balance, but there was one large transaction of about $260,000 that was favorable to the district. And earned income tax continues to be a strong increase every year, about $100,000 for the current year. Flipping over to the next page, actually going to flip past this pie chart here to keep moving along. Taking a quick look at the expenditures for the district. As we look down through the expenditures, point out, we were about 3% favorable variance to budget this year. So about a $1.9 million favorable variance. Little under half of that comes from salaries and benefits. Sounds like a large number, but it's only 2% of your overall salaries and benefits for the district that you're a favorable variance. Open positions, change in positions, favorable health insurance, being self-insured, the district flows up and down depending on how health insurance goes during the year. So we were recognizing about $90,000 favorable variance, though, from salaries and benefits this year. We also have some favorable variances through utilities. Winter likes to come in the last couple of years in about a week a year, so that does help on the heating and the utility side. And lastly, student transportation. You'll see the 18, 19 budget, I believe, is adjusted down for some of the student transportation savings. Remembering when you do your budget, you do it so early, you're really building a budget upon almost two years ago, not the current year. So gasoline prices, how they've leveled off, finally dropped off a little bit, those savings are finally built into your 18, 19 transportation. So flipping two pages forward then, you'll get to our governmental balance sheet. Item I wanted to point out here on the general fund, total fund balance, $15,162,709. Of that, the board has committed 6- 8,555,000 for various causes, $6,475,000 for your future retirement rate increases. Piers is still increasing. We were 30.03 in 2016, 17. I believe now it's going to top off over 35 to 36 as we continue to go forward. So continuing to see that number increase as we keep pushing towards the future. On top of that, we have $350,000 set aside for compensated absences, sick days, other vacation days that will be paid out of termination. $1.5 million for post-employment benefits, this is health insurance and other items that are received for retirees once they leave, when they meet certain service criteria and age. We have $5,893,000 as our unassigned fund balance. So your policy here at Pots Grove School District is 5% unassigned of subsequent year budget. You're actually over 8% at 8.93% of the 17, 18 budget. Now, I know you're working on 18, 19 now, but I'm talking 17, 18's budget. So a very strong position in the general fund. Directly next to that, you'll see the Capital Projects Fund. $9.5 million is our balance in capital projects. Of that, about $500,000 remains from the debt that was issued for the high school project. The remaining $9 million actually represents capital reserve for the district. Any questions on the general fund?
Common for the audience, that 8.3%, the plan is to move some of that into capital reserves, but we decided to defer the decision until the new board is seated sometime in the coming year. So it won't be 8.3 by June.
And listening to your facilities conversation, I know that there's a lot of maintenance-type items that'll be coming up here and always a plus to be able to set some money aside to capture those items without having to go back and look at that through the general fund, so. As you move two pages forward from there, you should be on a page for the Food Service Fund, Changes in Net Position. Food Service Fund, three-year history. The right-hand side represents 2017. Third number from the bottom actually shows we had a $40,000 surplus in food service this year, which brings our fund balance up in food service to about $96,000. Food service is outsourced, so always good to see a little bit of money coming in from food service at the end of the year. I can tell you that being outsourced here, a lot of my districts, as you get into some of the smaller schools especially, food service can be an area where you're almost supplementing from the general fund, so good to see a little bit of a surplus coming through to sustain operations in the food service fund.
Question on that?
Sure.
Does the net position go into the general fund or back to chart wells?
That net position is your net position. It just remains in the food service fund. But it is your cash and it is your net position. And lastly, the next page is your Internal Service Fund. So the district is self-insured for medical, dental, and prescription claims. 2017 column shows we did have a slight surplus of $237,000 in Internal Service Fund. This just represents the ebbs and flows of medical and dental insurance and prescription especially over the last couple of years. Prescription's been a real driver in expenditures lately across the board in any of my districts, so. Overall, though, still $4.2 million reserve in your Internal Service Fund. This protects the district from catastrophic claims, so good to have that reserve there and moving forward. So a couple more pages throughout here you can look through. The only other thing I would bring up is to mention required communications from us as the auditors. We had no difficulties in performing the audit, minimal adjustments to any of the accounts during the audit. We audited the school lunch program again and we had no finances deviations and overall an unmodified opinion, so a clean opinion. Any questions?
Just a thank you to Dave Nestor and his department for job well done.
So I echo those sentiments. You have a really nice- you have a very nice business department here. They do a really nice job. We appreciate being here and one last thing to say, your gifted program, I was actually really impressed with some of the public speaking in your gifted program. If I could bring them into my office to teach some of the staff a little bit of- I mean, I was very impressed by some of the public speaking, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and thank your staff for us, please. Thank as well.
Okay, our next item for discussion is the Safe Schools Partnership, and I would just like to lead in and I'll introduce Dr. Harney, who's going to share some information with us. Over the past, really, 12 months and during the transition period of mine, one of the things that has come to the forefront in our community obviously is the safety of our children as well as the mental health of our children as well. So when Dr. Harney came on board in the spring and this summer, we talked about this vision and this mission that we wanted to go on with the district and with the community to really enhance our partnership and our buy-in with all of our stakeholders within our community. So we have come to a point now where we're in a position to have our first meeting. I'd like Dr. Harney, who has spearheaded this, to give some insight to the board and the community tonight as we move forward in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. I'd like to go through a little bit of history about the creation of the committee. We began investigating how other districts do this. This is not new to school districts, these district-wide safety committees to talk about safety concerns as well as health and wellness concerns. We reached out to Steve Beck in the Montgomery County Emergency Management Office. He deals with a lot of the districts in this regard. He actually goes to quite a few meetings throughout the county, so we kind of picked his brain on some models that we might use and he pointed us in several directions on several districts. Mr. Lappick was very instrumental and involved in the creation of this and was very interested. So Mr. Lappick and I went out to the Lower Moreland School District where they've had this committee sitting for over 10 years now. They're very committed to the concept of safe schools and we were able to sit on their- in their meeting, kind of get a feel for the makeup of the committee, the kind of topics that they covered, all of the things that we wanted to do as far as building our committee. So we brought that back. We had a few more meetings and we started to formulate what this committee was going to look like. Did hand out to the board some detail on the committee. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but I would like to read the mission statement because I think it brings together what the entire concept of the committee is. "The Pots Grove Safe Schools Partnership endeavors to bring together all of our student advocates, stakeholders, and community partners with the goal of creating a safe, supportive, and productive educational environment for the students and staff of the Pots Grove School District." So that's the overarching mission of the committee. It will be a substantial committee. There'll be quite a few folks on it. We're going to have a lot of representation from administration. We're going to have representatives from our major vendors such as our food service department, transportation. We're going to be bringing in community members. We're working right now to work on finding some names of community members to bring in. We'll obviously have board representation. We're going to have police representation, fire and rescue representation, so we're going to have all of the- fire and rescue representation. So we're going to have all of the parties that we believe could contribute to our mission of creating the safest school environment we possibly can have. We're going to start the committee probably talking about the endeavors that were started here before I came with the Alice training as far as the active shooter training. That'll be the start of the meetings, and we're hoping to develop them through many topics that are pertinent to the safety of our students and our staff. So we've picked a date for our first meeting. I'm starting to make phone calls to some of the vast majority of people that we are reaching out to to be on this committee. So we're looking at the 14th of December to have our kickoff meeting. We've talked about probably trying to get to the point where we're having four meetings a school year, probably one at the beginning of the year, one in the late fall, one in the early spring, and one at the end of the year. We've talked about concepts of having subcommittees as far as covering topics and getting some real work done at the committee level. So these are some of the things we're working on. The committee will be starting from scratch. So we obviously want the committee to be part of what the committee is going to be doing and some of the goals that we're going to have as a committee. So we will keep you posted after our first committee meeting and where we're going from there as a committee. I appreciate all the support that we've had from our administration. We're going to probably have almost the majority of our administrative team there. And I also appreciate the support of our board members who have been involved. Mr. Alexander's also been involved in meetings. So we're looking forward to getting this thing kicked off in December, and we're hoping that it makes an impact and that we will truly be able to make a safer environment for both our students and our staff. Are there any questions? The time, I believe, is going to be 10 o'clock. It's going to be in the boardroom at the district office. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harney. I'd like to move forward now into under discussion with the superintendent's goals. Obviously, at the beginning of November, I had the opportunity to meet with the board and discuss my goals for 17-18. And tonight, I'd like to just highlight some of those things as I do ask for approval of these goals as we move forward. The four areas of topics will be to increase student achievement, to improve professional development, and to balance the 18-19 budget while maintaining the integrity of classroom instructional programs and co-curricular activities, and also to provide timely and relevant communication to each stakeholder group. So I'd just like to take a second specifically to break down this information for you. I mean, obviously, we continue to work. Our goals are continually to work in three through eight with PSSA scores to be at or above the state average. That's a goal that we continue to strive for. Also, we look at first-time tech takers on the Keystone, Algebra I, the Literature Keystone, and Keystone Biology. We continue to work to achieve those goals of getting at or above the state average as we move forward. One goal we're going to take a look at this year, we're going to take a look at other academic indicators other than state tests that will show achievement and growth. Some of those indicators will be SAT scores, ACT scores, NOCTI scores, MAP scores, and AP tests. We will do that to show increased student achievement as well as growth gains for Goal Five in that particular area. Also, as we move forward to improve professional development, we continue to help our teachers this year with the new demands that they face and the new ELA in math implementation. We also were going to provide continued training skills, guidelines, and expectations that we refine our learning's management system, which is School G, to aid with blended learning and our one-to-one technology program. That is something that we want to, obviously, with the investment that we have in the district and the tools that we have, we want to make sure that that implementation is being done with fidelity. Also, one of the things that I think are very important to our constituents in the district is to establish, building intervention teams and goals to help reduce the achievement gap between historically underperforming students and other students. I say other students because we don't want to forget anybody, but we do have an achievement gap, and we want to work at the building level to close this gap, and we want to start that process this year. And the final goal under this is to implement year two of professional learning communities. This year, we're going to use guiding questions as we meet with our teachers to inform instruction and also be able to report out on interventions that are taking place at the building level. As we look to finance, which is always important and to the forefront, you know, of our community and of our district, and I think one thing, as you saw tonight with the audit report, I think that this board, in the time that I've been in the district, has made great strides in using a great philosophy as far as maintaining the integrity of instruction and co-curricular activities. It's a proud point for me that we can continue to do what we do and continue to move the district forward. And that's quite a feat, and it's quite, it exerts a lot of energy. But as the chief administrator, I look at the things that help kids, and we want to continue to do that. And if we can do that and maintain the integrity, then it's a job well done. So we'll continue to do that this year. We always look at our expenditure variance, and I know Mr. Nestor always, you know, does the best job he possibly can to make our budget at the end be as close to the money going in, money going out as possible. I think that was evident tonight. We'll continue to work on the budget variance. And obviously, we're going to continue to work on a balanced budget with our overall spending increases, less than 1% on our non-nanated expenses. We made that goal last year. We're going to continue to strive forward on that particular goal. And finally, communication, obviously, in today's fast-paced, millisecond-by-millisecond social media society that we live in, we will always do the best job we can to be thoughtful in the correspondence that we give to our community members. And I think that is key for us as building leaders and as school leaders to be thoughtful in a very high-paced social media atmosphere that, I guess, I don't, we weren't born into it. Mason, you were born into it, but I wasn't. So, you know, it's a chore for us, but it's a good chore because, again, it keeps us in tune with our community. So as we look to provide relevant communication to each stakeholder group, once again, we will put out our community survey. Last year, we had a 73 rating. This year, our goal will be 80. 80% of our constituents are satisfied with the school district. We will also look at continuaries of overall district communications. We continue to focus on school communications, budget communications. We monitor our electronic communications with our face-to-face communications and working on communicating with non-parent residents. We're to have some ideas to how we can reach out to those constituents. And also responding to public input, we feel our Safe Schools Partnership is a good way for us to help bridge some of those gaps. As we look to 17-18, we continue to look at other ways to build our community and our co-curricular activities. I will be speaking to the board about the possibility of continually the conversation of a Director of Community Relations and Co-Curricular Activities, which will bridge that gap as well, our Safe Schools Partnership, and the already established Potsgro Village that kicked off this summer to help us with that aspect in our community. So I respectfully submit these goals. I feel that there's challenges, but they're all realistic in the sense that they can be attainable, and we've positioned ourselves with our curriculum and our staffing and our professional development, and we continue to work on communications. It'll make us a viable school district as we move forward together. So I submit these goals to the board.
Dr. Shirk, I just wanted to say that one of my goals four years ago was to have a superintendent who would put together a set of goals like these. So I thank you very much for that, particularly the hard numbers that are in the beginning of it. I will point out that, you know, we faced this last year, and you folks will face it again next year, and that is that the test scores come in in a misaligned way with the first part of your goals here. And I don't know how to resolve that, and I guess I don't have to worry about resolving it. But I did want to point that out, and I want to make a motion to approve these goals.
Thanks, Rick. And so we have a motion and a second to approve these goals. Do we have comments at this time or questions?
I'm just curious if there's anything that would keep us keeping, to tabling this till next month or next meeting when we have the new board in place? I don't know if there's a timeline that we, I just wonder if it'd be wise to have their input and then let them vote.
I just want to kind of add into that. I think they're going to have enough. They're going to be overwhelmed. And I think since we've been on the board, have been working with Dr. Shirk, I think we should approve them now. And we can bring them up to speed, but they're going to be overwhelmed for a little bit.
If I may comment, Mr. Parker. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with my administrative teams, elementary and secondary leadership, and we wanted to start the goal process because a lot of the, there's a lot of the goals that we've started and they've worked on but have not solidified with their staff, especially the historically underperforming intervention teams, as well as trying to work, I know, at the different levels with PSSA, our MAP testing, to get our kids ready for the PSSAs as well. I know Dr. Ziegler, we're looking at how we can better our English and Language Arts at the high school. You know, I mean, we're, a lot of the wheels are turning. So one of the thoughts, I'm meeting with our two board members this week. We're going to talk about transition. I'm going to give them the opportunity to get every piece of information and access to all the information possible. You know, as Mr. Ruben, there's no secrets here. We're not, we're giving them as much information as they want until they tell us to stop. But I would like to see us move forward tonight with these goals, and that way, my administrative team can really get working on them. We'd delay the process almost a month where they wouldn't probably kick this thing off till January, you know, of the year. So that's my, you know, I'm asking for that if that's possible. And as I do said, I'm going to be meeting with both gentlemen Thursday, and I'm going to talk about transition and all this information.
Just a side note, as I did last year, I'm going to be voting no to these goals based on the third goal regarding budget, the first objective, the goal in regards to property tax increases. With where our community is in comparison to the rest of the county, and just the fact that we continue to have especially senior citizens needing to move out due to costs, I'm going to be voting no to anything that doesn't reflect a zero goal, zero tax increase goal.
I'd just like to add that, starting with last year's goals, I got something that I had been asking for for a few years prior, which is something that's quantitative and measurable. We started out with some, setting a very high bar for quantitative and measurable goals in the areas of student achievement. Some areas, we made progress. Some areas, we did not. For the benefit of the community, I can tell you that there's been a lot of work around goals that we did not achieve, identifying reasons why we may have not have achieved them, and putting into place action plans to get us further in this coming year. So especially in regards to student achievement, we've got some new positions created in the administrative areas. We've got new curriculum. There's a lot of work ahead of us, and those bars continue to be set high. That being said, there's some goals this year. We had goals around those last year, and this year, they're measurable. So quantitative and measurable, we continue to work in that direction, and I appreciate the work of Dr. Shirk and his team to get us to that place where we can actually see that the efforts that they put forth are coming back to us and paying off, we're getting the return on the investment, both in money and time spent. So I'm appreciative of that, and I look forward to us continuing on in that direction as the years progress. So thank you.
And I would just like to add that I would rather that we set our goals high and sometimes fall short, but get them down and have everybody working towards them and moving in that direction. And I would much rather have that and falling short than having amorphous, unmeasurable goals that focus more on, we're going to do this, 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 and this, and then we say, we did that, that, and that, which is what we used to have. So in my opinion, this is light years ahead. And yes, we will fall short from time to time in an area or two, hopefully none, but better to have that than the way we did it before.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the goals, Dr. Shirk's goals?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thanks. Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate your support. Moving on. Moving on to action items for personnel.
I like to, yes, I was just going to say, I'll second that.
Can we just take out 11.9?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to combine 11-1 through 11-8. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I mean, shoot.
Oh.
No.
We can go back?
Go.
Sorry, Bob.
Usually pause between asking for questions and the call for the vote.
I was looking right at you when you raised your hand, too. Just didn't click. I'm sorry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to 11.9 supplemental appointments. We ask you to support the supplemental appointments as submitted.
Second. Questions or comments?
Just a couple of questions. How does it work for the teachers that are doing the, you know, sports or whatever? Do they, are there times where they have to leave early? If so, is there a change in, how does that affect their pay compared to the teachers that are here the full day? And if teachers are leaving early, who's, how are the classes covered? I'm presuming it's during like pride period or tutoring, so who's providing that for the students, if that's an issue?
My history was out. I know a couple of things. First of all, the league, many, many years ago, tried to establish later start times so that this would not happen as frequent. Some of our road trips, unfortunately, you know, lend us to the point where we have to leave early. I know at the middle school, they do have an activity period, ninth period, that sort of helps us out with that particular piece, that any teacher commitment can be covered by another colleague within that particular team. And the same really goes at the high school. I know a lot of time with Dr. Ziegler, I know myself, and I think, I'm not going to speak for you, Dr. Ziegler, but we do a lot of scheduling around our coaches so that at the end of the day, you try to schedule those coaches to have all the periods up front so that their planning period or can be at the end of the day and not affect kids. So I know, I know I used to work, I think, Dr. Ziegler, you do the same thing, and we try to eliminate as minimal coverage as possible. That has been really practice for me, Mr. Parker, that probably for over 15 years, you know, in administration, we've tried to work through the schedule. And I know the league back many, many years ago, and I can't even date myself, really tried to have start times at a later time so transportation could be built in at the end of the day without affecting any classroom time.
I don't expect you to be able to answer this here. It's something that, you know, is there any assurance that we could have or maybe moving forward if, you know, because I don't especially know everybody's schedules right here, that students in the schools and the classrooms are not negatively affected by this? For example, if it's, I'm just throwing something out, if it's a math teacher leaving ninth period, you know, and students need to come in for tutoring, is there a way that when these approvals are made, you know, at your level, that we can just have some sort of assurance that students aren't being negatively affected from the classrooms?
I guess I'll accept that as a challenge question, like, you know, I would probably, you know, doing this, I would probably say that any teacher in any school district that I was ever part of that I was ever part of would never leave a kid out, hanging to dry as far as a tutoring situation or extra help is concerned, that they would find a colleague somehow, some way to figure out how that instructional piece. If I found out that they weren't doing that, I would be disappointed. I would be disappointed. I think for me, you know, we hire professionals, people, teachers come into this profession because they want to do what's best for kids. There's no intent for any negligence up front on this. Those particular items that have come my way as a building administrator, I have, I have talked to parents who have concerns about the kids, or students, their sons and daughters, and we've worked out tutoring sessions before school or other after school or during lunches. We've been creative in helping, helping our students be successful. And I would, I would really lend my administrative team to, you know, my principals out there to say, if anything like this was happening at the building level, that they would, they would make sure to take care of it. And, you know, working through their guidance department, working through our social workers, we have a lot of stopgaps in place that would help, help this not to be prevented. So, you know, my insurance is really the integrity and professionalism of our staff. That would, that would be another whole different pitch for me if that wasn't taking place. But I think that I'm going to go with the thoughts that our teachers do what's best for kids. They do it every day. And our administrations are going to be there to make sure that that, that happens and they're supported.
And if I could just add one thing, when, when you are a coach with your athletes, you realize they're a student athlete. They're a student first than an athlete. And most of the athletes know this going in, that they have that responsibility, you know, that their studies come first.
Okay, to move forward then? All right. All in favor on 11.9? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, we've moved to action items, number 12 under business. We recommend to approve a contract with the Continuum Behavioral Health Services for one student not to exceed $3,000.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on 12.1?
Why are we going outside of our district staff? Behavior management plans are, not all the time, but are common in IEPs. We even have a behavior specialist on staff. Why, why is this something that we're paying an additional 3,000 for?
I want to ask Ms. Speaker to come up, please. Can you answer that question for Mr. Parker? If not, we can, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Just to answer that question, this particular agency provides a specialty in behavior that's needed in this instance. That's not something that we have the capacity to do internally. That's probably about all I can say. Okay.
On 12.1, do we have any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Moving on to 12.2 teamwork wins agreement. Recommend approval of the continued contract with teamwork wins for transition services for one student at a rate of $1,170 per week for the remainder of the school year.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this one?
Same question. Transition plans are something, you know, your staff do for all students that, that's at that age. So, why different now?
Transition plans are a required component of individualized education plans for students that are 14 and older. And simply by the nature of the fact that they need to be individualized for the students' needs for transition, which includes post-secondary employment, post-secondary training and education, and also independent living, the needs there could take many forms. So, a lot of those needs, we, we are able to meet within the high school. We have lots of students that are employed in the community with the supports of job coaches, other agency supports to increase and establish independence. Another thing that we've been doing recently is really focusing on what we have in-house via our transitions course, and really embedding a lot of supports in the high school. But simply by the nature of it needing to be individualized, there are many things that, that could be in need. And this is a particular agency that's filling a need for one of our students.
So, just to clarify, is this something new that's happening that we're going to see more, more frequently? Or is this a unique, again, a unique situation?
This particular contract is not a new contract. This is a continuation of a previous contract. But there is increasing amount of scrutiny at the state level via compliance monitoring for indicator 13, which is transition plans. So, we have additional state reporting that's been happening for the last year. And that additional scrutiny from our Bureau of Special Education monitors that students' transition plans are appropriate for their needs and that they're actually meeting the goals that are established. So, it is something that you might see more of by the way of unique and individualized supports and plans.
So, something typical among all Pennsylvania districts?
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Kate.
Okay, moving on to elevator maintenance service, RFP. Our recommendation is to award a contract for elevator maintenance service to Tri-State Elevator Services, Inc., the lowest possible bidder.
Lowest responsible bidder. Lowest possible might be better in some cases.
Stay corrected. Dilexia comes in now and then. Sorry, Bob.
Any questions or comments on 12.3? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Moving on to 12.4 snow removal, RFP. Our recommendation is to award a contract for snow removal service for the school years 2017 through 2020 as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I did have a question, sort of out of curiosity, though. It has there that one of the companies bidding decided to pull a bid due to the length of the review process? Is this sort of?
This individual vendor wanted us to commit to them before we had an opportunity to present to you. No, we, we did the bid in late October. We just didn't have a chance to, we didn't have another meeting.
I do have a bit of a question. So, we had a pre-meeting, two vendors attended. We received three responses, one of them withdrew. Okay, and now we've got a lowest responsible bidder that we've awarded the contract to for three years? Okay. Is there anything, any wording in the contract that if the, what about, what are the remediation things? If it's not timely, if it's not adequately done, or what are our opportunities to adjust?
Well, we did set performance standards without any penalties, though, on the time that they need to respond to activation of snow removal, coordination from the facilities department on expectations and so forth for performance with the vendor, whoever was selected.
So, since it's in the contract, then if they do a poor job the first year, we can, the contract can be voided?
Right. It's no financial or monetary punishment for doing a poor job, but we can exit the contract if it's performance. Right. Yeah, sorry. Okay, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, moving on to 12.5 winter slash spring athletic bid. Award the 2017-18 winter sports athletic bids to the lowest responsible bidders as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I do. Is this Market Street money?
No.
No. Where would the funds be coming after this?
This is general fund. It's budgeted.
Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, 12.6, the audit report for the year ending June 30, 2017. We ask that you accept the district's audit report for the year ending June 30, 2017 as presented tonight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the audit report. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Section 12.7, property tax resolution. We asked, and for your recommendation, or we have the recommendation to adopt the resolution limiting the district's increase in property taxes for the 2018-19 school year adjusted to the Act One index. That index is, for 18-19, is 3.2 percent.
Motion and a second. And just to explain this, and if I do it wrong, you can shoot me from over there, Dave. But, so this is our, this is our motion to, a resolution to stay within the Act One index, which is 3.2 this, 3.2 percent this year, meaning that we can, we resolve only to raise taxes to a maximum of 3.2 percent without filing for the exceptions that are available to us. So, by doing this, we don't have to file a preliminary budget early in the year. We can continue on with our budget process because we made the commitment not to file for those exceptions, which we have done for the previous three years.
And, yes, we've done it for the previous three. I think there was some contention four years ago on, on the question. But, I think it's great to see the administration recommending that we at least stay within the index, although 3.2 percent would be way higher than I hope that you folks will need to do in the, in the coming school year. So, you know, this is actually just a no-brainer. It also makes the budget process a lot easier because we're not as tied to specific deadlines as we are when we seek exceptions. Is that, that's correct, Dave?
That's correct. By making this resolution, the only deadlines we have to meet is we have to adopt a preliminary, or, excuse me, a proposed final budget in May so that we can advertise that we're going to adopt a final budget in June. So, it takes away a lot of the other hurdles that we have to go through in between.
Okay. If we don't have any further questions, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great. Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to 12.8, the assessment appeal settlement. I think I should ask Mark Davis to read this one, but I will read it with him. Our recommendation is to authorize Fox Rothschild LLP to enter into agreement for the property located at 1555 Medical Drive in Lower Potsgrove Township and further identified tax parcel number 420003065574, setting the assessment of the property at $520,000 for the tax year 2017, school tax year 1718, and $500,000 for the tax year 18, school tax year 1819, and for each subsequent years, excuse me, tax year until the change in the property tax assessment pursuant to applicable law. We ask for this recommendation.
I suspect the most practical question would be, what's it going to cost us? And it's going to cost us approximately $3,900, excuse me, $3,600, between $3,600 and $3,700. We are suggesting this settlement because we've had the property appraised, the taxpayers had the property appraised, and the number, the assessments being set at is much closer to our number. I'd rather not get into those details publicly, but certainly would respond to anybody after the meeting, or someone wants an executive session. Otherwise, we recommend this settlement.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
12.9, budget transfers. Our recommendation is to approve budget transfers for October as presented.
Motion and a second to approve the budget transfers. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Action items for education. Moving forward, our district comprehensive plan. What we ask, we, we worked through this process last year. The state basically had a one-year hold. And basically, you know, we administratively, we were not going to make any, any changes to that because we went through the project, and did due diligence on that. We posted it for 30-day review. And now, we're asking that you approve our district comprehensive plan as presented, which will run through July of 2018 through June of 2021.
Didn't we previously approve it, too, before we knew the state delayed it by a year? Okay, so then I'll motion to approve again.
Motion and a second then to approve the district comprehensive plan. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have a motion and a second to combine the rest of education action items, which consists of conference attendance and one mentor approval. Any questions or comments on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks. All right, next up, we have the JOC update. Patty?
Yes. We just had our monthly meeting on November 6, and we had a great meeting. We do have a couple upcoming events I'd like to announce. Like Savannah had said, tomorrow night's a girls' night out. And this is an opportunity for our female students, 5th through 11th grade, for non-traditional careers to look at. It's from 6:00 to 8:30. Also, we have Petio's Driving School that we're going to have at the Western Center. This, this is offering a state-approved 30-hour driver education that we'll have at the Western Center. Petatio is an approved PennDOT skills testing school, and the successful competition of this class may result in students receiving their senior license sooner and possibly getting a significant reduction in their insurance rates. Class sizes are really limited. We max out at 26, and they fill up really quickly. The winter dates are coming up. They're going to start November 28, and it goes to January 23. And these are 15 two-hour classes from 6:30 to 8:30, and the cost is $125. And I do, I do think driver's education is so important for our students. All this information I say tonight is on the website at thewesterncenter.org. So, if you want more detailed information, we are going to be having open house on Wednesday, November 29, from 5:00 to 8:00. And this will be the showcase of our tiny house. Our tiny house is built. And we just showcased it up at Penn State. And, I mean, it was, it was such a hit. It was such a hit up there. So, before we sell it, we, everybody wanted to, it was really hot to sell it. And we're like, why, why sell it? Let's showcase it. And I would like in future, I talked to Dr. Shirk in the future, have some of our Potsgrove students come And I do, I do think driver's education is so important for our students. All this information I say tonight is on the website at thewesterncenter.org. So if you want more detailed information, we are gonna be having open house on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, from five to eight, and this will be the showcase of our tiny house. Our tiny house is built, and we just showcased it up at Penn State, and I mean, it was, it was such a hit. It was such a hit up there. So before we sell it, we, everybody wanted to, was really hot to sell it, and we're like, why, why sell it? Let's showcase it. And, and I would like in future, I talked to Dr. Shirk in the future, have some of our Potsgrove students come here with a little presentation, because it did take three years out of their ordinary curriculum to build this, and, and it's tiny. It's really tiny. Jim, I don't even know if you, you could stand tall in it. It's tiny. But I'm very proud of our students there. The salon, one of me to announce that they extended their hours from two-fifteen to seven PM. A lot of the students need their career hours.
Just, would I get a discount? Discount?
Yeah, there you go. They could put the wig on and try to, you know. They do, they do. One, one highlight that I just wanted to point out, at our meeting, we congratulated Julie Levin Good, who attends Springfield. Julie's hard work in, in our health science technology program earned her a seventy-two thousand scholarship for nursing at Gwyneth Mercy College. That, I, I was very impressed with that. So we congratulate her. Our next meeting will be January eighth. That'll be our community dinners, which will be our Italian buffet. I think I have a flyer here somewhere. Again, these sell out. The, it's limited seating. It's a buffet. It's for four to eight. Tickets are thirteen dollars for adults and nine for children, and two and under are free. And anything that I have announced, just check out thewesterncenter.org, because there are so many exciting things going on over there. And that's it.
Patty, I have one question. As a parent of a fifteen-year-old who's gonna turn sixteen in March, is the driver's education program only open to students enrolled in the Western Center, or is it open to any student? Thank you.
Rick, it has to be a, a student in one of the three school districts.
Yes.
Okay, and it is, I was gonna comment, it is very well worth it. I think Mason, you did it too, right? The driver's ed itself is, just the classroom time is great, but then when they contest right there, and you don't have to deal with the DMV and getting up at four AM to make an appointment, and then finding that the portal closed at four oh-one and thirty seconds, and that you got up at four AM for no reason at all, it makes it very, very worth it.
But I assume they have to be sixteen to take the course? No?
No, they can actually take it, I think, at like fifteen and a half, I wanna say. I just had the paperwork in my hand today.
I'll look it up.
I was just filing it away.
Okay.
But it's, it, they only offer it twice a year. And you can do it in the, at least when Riley did it, you can do it in the summer. It was actually the first full week of no school, so she hated me for a whole week because she was going three hours a day, but it was great to get it out of the way. So it's very well worth it.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to the report of the policy committee. So policy met on October twenty-fourth, and basically, the, the whole meeting focused on policy seven oh-seven for use of property and facilities. Because of some of the issues that we ran into with the rollout of the revised policy, we took the, took the policy back to committee to start looking at some revisions to clarify and to kinda especially open up the classes, A through D, to make them more appropriate and, and better defined for where different community organizations fit. First revision that we looked at was adding language to the Class A definition for the purpose of classification for the fee schedules, and that language added there was, for, Class A basically is, is no charge to use the facilities, nonprofit civic organizations such as Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, et cetera. The second revision was for language around financial hardship. So one of the things that we wanna make sure that we do not do is to preclude organizations who need our facilities from using them based on a financial hardship. So should an organization believe they have a financial hardship in regards to the, the fees, they can appeal their circumstances to the district, and the decision would be rendered in a timely manner. So let's say, for, for the sake of the, the issue we had with the Girl Scouts earlier in the year, where they had not been, they, they didn't know of the policy change coming up, they didn't plan for the money they were gonna need, they could file a financial hardship, and the district would consider that and, and get back to them in a timely fashion. We still talked again about concerns over organizations like the PTAs and, and the like that just live to serve Potsgrove students. How can we make sure that they're not being charged to serve our students, but at the same time, we recognize that it's very important that the district wants to keep tabs on the money or the donations of equipment or services even that come into the district through these PTAs. So we're gonna continue to work on that, but as, and at the same time, make sure that we're, we're finding ways to work accordingly with the PTAs and other organizations like that that exist solely to serve our students. So additionally, for some of the youth programs that exist in the district, namely sports and things of that nature, where the programs can show that they serve one hundred percent Potsgrove students, the consideration is to allow those organizations to be moved from Class B, where there would be a fee schedule up into Class A, where there would not be, with the stipulation that they can prove that they're serving one hundred percent Potsgrove students. We, we had some additional conversation around the language of civic organizations, which, which I talked about at the very beginning. What's the definition of a civic organization? And again, if we need to, we're gonna continue to work on that and clarify. We wanna be able to have language that we can apply consistently and evenly so that every time a new organization comes up for use of the facilities, or even an organization returning, that we don't have to go and try and interpret our policy. We wanna, we wanna be accommodating, and we wanna serve the purpose of this policy change with the fee schedules, which is try to recoup any wear and tear costs to the district, but at the same time, we wanna be able to apply it evenly without going back to committee every single time we have a new organization that comes in and doesn't quite fit one of our class molds. Okay, so, work in progress. We will continue to apply the policy as it is with considerations to make sure that we don't inconvenience or put out any of these local community organizations and youth organizations who had been using the facilities up to this point. So the new revision will continue to be applied until we can apply another revision, but that is being worked on at, at this time. And in the meantime, we'll make sure that we, we take care of the organizations that are using the facilities. For new business, we only had some opening discussion just around the fact that PSBA is recommending policy revisions to a number of policies that relate to special education. So Dr. Harney and Mrs. Pacito will be working together on getting revisions to those policies based on the PSBA recommendations to the committee for review, hopefully to start the discussions on the revisions in the January meeting. Okay, that's it for policy. Thanks. At this time, we move on to new business. Does anybody have any new business?
I'd like to very quickly go over the facilities committee meeting that we had tonight, so we have kind of an idea of, of the path forward. We talked about several things tonight. One of them was the roofing and building envelope recommendations for the middle school. We had talked about this a couple of months ago, and the number that we were looking at was about, I think, two and a half million dollars for the project. They came in with some more detail on how we wanna do this, and so we had a discussion on that and some of the things that we had. Everybody on the board will be getting a copy of the presentation that was given to us tonight, so obviously, any of us on the committee or facilities, or Mr. Nestor would be happy to answer your questions, and if need be, we can go back to the, the roofing company that was talking about it. So we had these number of issues that we talked about for the roof replacement, and then there was a couple of other issues that were tangentially related to it, including the demolishing the wall around the chiller outside the middle school and putting in some stands for that, fixing some control joints that were improperly sized, fixing some flashing to, to accommodate some other things. So that, that work was worth in about another hundred thousand dollars, so we're up to two point five million on that work. We talked about middle, middle school water heater replacement. That's for about seventeen thousand dollars. That'll be coming before the board for your approval from the, from the committee. And also, the playground out at West Potsgrove, the paving's in really bad shape, and we've evaluated that, and we wanna go out with a contract to get that replaced for about twenty-four thousand dollars. So next month, when we come back here in, in December, we're going to have the folks here from the, from the roofing company go over what the recommendations were and are. There was, when you see the things, we'll talk about what, what it was we wanted. Like I said, if you do have any questions when you look at the presentations, please, you know, feel free to ask. We'll be happy to go over those and make a decision then.
Mr. Lang, I just wanted to, just, you know, for the rest of the board and, and new members, maybe the two concerns that, that were brought up in committee as far as expenditures piece conversation might be, might be worth just bringing it up.
Right. As part of the roofing in the middle school, there's an existing skylight up on the third deck where you come out of the, where you come out of the auditorium, you know, between the library and the auditorium, or, sorry, between the auditorium and gym, and there's a skylight there, and it's leaking, and it has been leaking for some time. Skylights will leak, period, end of story. Very, very, very rarely you can get a, a skylight that's in, that doesn't leak for its entire lifetime. I, I don't know of any in my experience, but they said there has been some, you know, these mythical, non-leaking skylights. So I'm recommending, I'm recommending that we, we go ahead and, yes, we're gonna take the skylight out, and instead of replacing it, we're just gonna cover over the roof, and we're gonna put in some additional lighting, because right now, depending on that natural light. Remember where this is? It's up on the third deck, outside the, outside the auditorium and between the gym, so not too many folks are in that space, honestly. So we're not, we're not taking away a major focal point of, of artistic expression, in my opinion. So there was that, and-
Will that save us any money, Bob?
Yes, it will. The, the price for that was recommended to be about sixty-two thousand dollars along those lines. I imagine it'll be, well, it, it definitely will be much, much less, and I'd be, I'd be reluctant to put a number out there, but something like ten thousand as opposed to sixty thousand.
Thanks.
Okay. And the wall, yeah, I, I touched briefly on this. The, the wall around the cooling tower, it's, it traps moisture, and there's some associated piping there that is mounted to the wall, and the wall also serves partially as a retaining wall. So my question was, was the wall there purely aesthetically, or was it there for, for a purpose? And the answer was both. Part of it was a retaining wall. We're gonna keep that at about, to about eight foot of the existing twenty right now. Yes? And we're going to, we could get rid of the rest of it. There aren't really any moving things. There aren't any things that people can get into and get their hands stuck or anything, so I'm not concerned about that. And we were gonna put that piping that's connected to the wall, basically on foundations to the ground now. So basically, just have standard pipe supports as opposed to, you know, wall hanging supports as it does now. It's an ongoing maintenance issue, not only creating problems and sweating and rust for the cooler, chilling, chill, chill tower, but also for the wall itself. It's masonry wall, and it's having water issues. So those are the two things we wanna consider taking out of the project.
And also a money saver?
Also a money saver, yes. We're all about saving the money. How's that?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Just pointing out, that's why it's inevitable that you folks will have to put money back into capital reserves, since about a third of it is going to maintenance this summer of the total capital reserve that we have right now. So unfortunate, but true.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Other new business?
I just have one little thing. The Potsgrove Recreation Board met last Thursday. They just wanted me to update that the fall swim classes started on November third, and there's about twenty-one students registered, so they're really excited about the number. The community band was on PC TV. They have already aired, but thanks to Mr. Tellis, anytime he has an open slot, he's gonna put them in there. So just stay tuned. So we thank you, Mr. Tellis. I'm kind of excited to announce that this spring, the Western Center is gonna offer first aid and safety training to all the volunteers with the students, because I didn't realize they have no training. They have no safety training, and we, that, that's something we need to put in place. They do have the funds available, so I talked to the Western Center, and we can put something in place there. The board is, I don't wanna say stagnated, but they're looking for ideas. So to me, they wanna reach out to the community. If you have any ideas that they could use, that they could get involved in, please contact Mrs. Ludi, because they're, they're, they just need some fresh ideas, so, and there'll be no, no meeting in December.
I have just a couple of things. First one is I, I'd like to shut down a rumor. Apparently, that's been going through the high school. I have been told that Spirit Week, Week was canceled. Is that true? Mason, have you heard that? Spirit Week, right before Christmas, was canceled. Did you hear that? Savannah? Okay, well. Right, well, apparently, what I was told is that students are being told that the, the board said that it can't happen anymore. Well, obviously, we never said that. So I just wanted to sort of shut that rumor down, if at all possible. We never voted on anything. We never talked about anything. It wasn't us. And I hope you get Spirit Week, Spirit Week back, because I know you guys really, really enjoy that. So I certainly hope that that's reinstated. One other thing I just wanted to touch on real quick has also to do with high school, has to do with senior class trip. There's been a lot of difficulty this year trying to get enough students to go on the trip. As far as I know, this is the first time that there's ever been an issue with not enough students signing up for it. One of the reasons why I feel, this is just from what I'm, I've been told, that they're having difficulty, is that they've been priced out of it this year. It's three hundred dollars more this year than it has been in the past. They did add an extra day, but they basically are paying three hundred dollars for one day. That's, I mean, I know Disney's expensive, but it went from twelve hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars, and while, you know, to average Joe, maybe three hundred dollars isn't a lot, but that's a, that's a huge jump as far as I'm concerned. And I know they're still struggling to fill the quota, and they've pushed back the deadline. I did a quick calculation. People don't realize, until they actually have a senior, how expensive senior year is. It, my quick calculation came out to anywhere between almost eleven hundred dollars and thirteen hundred dollars is spent senior year between the prom, senior pictures. I just ordered senior pictures last night, and it's, it's ridiculous how expensive they are. Yearbook, even clothes for the, needed to be worn for graduation. The girls have to buy white dresses if they don't already have them. The guys have to have a suit and tie, have a shirt and tie, and, and, you know, dress shoes. Same with the girls. All that stuff, if they don't have it, they've gotta go buy it. The prom, five to six hundred dollars for the prom easily. So when you add, when it, when you think, well, another three hundred isn't a big deal, it is, because the eleven hundred to thirteen hundred does not include senior class trip. So that's a really expensive year, and I just hope that it will be taken into consideration in the future that- in the future that while to some, 300 might not be much, to a lot of our students, it's a lot of money. And to me, it's a lot of money, you know? So just wanted to put that out there. And I, I hope they can get it resolved. And I, one more, one more thing I wanted to say is, if they don't end up going on the trip, I really hope they find some, an alternative for the students to do for that week, even if it's for a day or two.
Mrs. Cuss, I could just add, I'd spoken to Dr., we've been, you know, concerned about, about the attendance piece. And we're not going to not have it. We're going to continue with the trip, but we're going to, we're going to reconvene and talk about what next year would look like. And some of the things that you're talking about are things we're going to talk about for next year. I didn't want to pull the rug out from the 80, 81 students, whatever we have. This is the first time, I think, we're under 100. You know, usually the number's around 120. So we had talked about this several weeks ago, and I asked him to continue to do a push, to try to see if we can garner any extra interest. And then after that point, we were just going to say, we're having it, they're going, we're not going to pull the rug out of those kids that committed. It is a Pots Grove tradition, so I don't want to just say it's, it's over. So that will continue, and then we're going to do our due diligence, look at this into the spring, so we can make some good decisions for the junior class right out of the gate in early spring. Not, not wait, but, but talk to them early enough. So, thank you.
I just think it's a shame that this graduating class is, is sort of suffering because of, you know, a change in the, in the price point. And, and one additional thing was, I talked to previous seniors who went on the trip, and they said, you know, they said, adding an extra day is absolutely the wrong idea, because by day four, we are done. We are sick of the people we're with. Think of the time you go. You know, you go end of May, beginning of June, it's hot, hot, hot down there. They're sweaty, they sweated through all their clothes, they can't do laundry, they just want to go home. And they all said, you know, adding an extra day, bad idea, because you're, you're finished with everybody at that point, and you just can't wait to come home. They've had a great time, but enough is enough.
I have one final new business, and that is related to the AP exams. I understand...
I forgot AP exams in my calculation.
You did.
I did.
Well, it turns out that, that I learned from, from a person I know who works in the neighboring school district to the east that is certainly much wealthier than ours, that they pay for all students, they pay for one AP exam per year to take, to take the exam. So, I mean, if a student's taking five exams, they're only paying for one of them, but it's a per-year thing. And we don't. And possibly, we don't for good reason, because our finances are very tight. But I was surprised when I learned that. And it has the effect of encouraging kids to take the exam who might otherwise not be able to afford it. Now, we do also offer a reduced rate for students to take the AP exam if they qualify for the school lunch program, I believe. But, but I did want to just mention to the board that the, that other school districts have programs like this to both defray the cost as well as encourage students to take AP classes and then also take the exam. So I just thought I would mention that, and now I am signing off.
Okay, any further? And, excuse me. Now we have time for a second opportunity for public comment, if there is any public left. Thank you, Evan. Okay, so at this time, we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody, for sticking with us. We had two meetings to cram into one tonight, so.